Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis? Lopez Caneva.
Yes. Will everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Dr. McBride, lead us in the pledge again.
Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start with our resolutions. All right, recognizing Ellie Fontaneta.
Good evening and welcome. This evening, we will begin our Board of Education meeting with the reading of three resolutions. Would Ellie Fontaneta please come in front of the stage? And head coach Grant Furkeluk. This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of senior Ellie Fontaneta. Whereas Ellie Fontaneta, a senior student at Lockport Township High School, claimed the title of Class A AWD State Champion in the 50 Free, 100 Free, and 100 Breast on November 13th, 2021 at FMC Naddatorium in Westmont, Illinois. And whereas Grant Furkeluk, Derek Sanderson, and Allison Chambers, swim coaches at Lockport Township High School, have aided and guided Ellie Fontaneta in her accomplishments. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Ellie Fontaneta is hereby recognized for her accomplishments. And that this resolution was adopted by the Lockport Township High School District 205 Board of Education on this 13th day of December, 2021. Congratulations, Ellie.
All right, do I have a motion for this resolution?
So move.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, congratulations, Ellie. We are very proud of you. All right, thank you to your parents and coaches.
This second resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of the Lockport Township High School Varsity Boys Soccer Team 2021 IHSA Class 3A State Competition. Welcome soccer team and head coach Chris Beal. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team claimed the title of 2021 Third Place IHSA 3A State Champions. And whereas the Lockport Township High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team defeated Morton 2-1 in the IHSA Class 3A State Soccer Championship held at Hoffman Estates High School on November 6th, 2021. And whereas coaches Chris Beal, Todd Elkai, Steve Rockroer, Aaron Dunn, George Pullman, and Steve Bentley have aided and guided the members of the Lockport Township High School Boys Varsity Soccer Team in their successes as Lockport Township High School District 205 athletes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the Lockport Township High School Soccer Team is hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedication to their school and communities. That this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School District 205, this 13th day of December, 2021. Congratulations to the team and coaches.
Do I have a motion to recognize the 2021 Boys Soccer Third Place State Championship? All right, second?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson, second by Mr. Ives. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Coach Beal. Soccer players, congratulations. Thank you for all your hard work. I know it's a tough season and we truly appreciate all of the efforts and even though you were still champions to us even with third place. All right, Freda, thank you.
Thank you.
And the program first.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Good, thank you.
Our final resolution this evening is recognizing the accomplishments of the Lockport Township High School Football Team in the 2021 IHSA Class 8A State Football Competition. Welcome head coach George Chart and the football team. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Football Team claimed the title of 2021 IHSA 8A State Champions. And whereas the Lockport Township High School Football Team defeated Maine South 24-6 in the IHSA Class 8A State Football Championship held at Husky Stadium in DeKalb, Illinois on November 1st, 2021. And whereas coaches George Chart, Dave Palmer, Corey Dillard, Adam DeCare, Ryan Russell, Bo Starkey, Zach Vargas, Mark Carman, Mark Dorn, Mike Taylor, Derek Freiberg, Eric Carlson, Pete Kishline, and Rob Schultz have aided and guided the members of the Lockport Football Team in their successes as Lockport Township High School District 205 athletes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the Lockport Township High School Football Team is hereby recognized for their outstanding achievements and dedication to their school and communities. That this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School District 205, this 100, this, I'm sorry, this 13th day of December, 2021. Congratulations to the players and coaches.
All right, I'll make the motion to recognize the 2021 Football State Championship. Do I have a second?
Second.
And second, it's been motioned by Ann Lopez Caneva and second by Dick Ives. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, and I really truly appreciate everything all of you guys have done so far. I've, I cannot thank you enough. I can, and you made us a city of champions both for Crest Hill, Homer Glen, and Lockport. And thank you for bringing the state championship. It was an exciting game, and I know you guys put a lot of effort and hard work into it. But thank you, thank you so much. And thank you to the parents also for all the personal sacrifices you made them. All right, thank you. All right. Thank you.
You bet, but you're not done yet. So when you win a, you know, when you win a football championship, which this 33-year educator believes is the toughest team championship to win in the state of Illinois, you get a lot of attention. So we've had a lot, and you come from a community in Lockport and Homer Township that isn't just Lockport. So we have a lot of dignitaries that just want to take a second to congratulate you. So we asked them to come here tonight and do that congratulations. Also, you probably saw around town lots of people congratulating you. This banner was actually donated, so we had a request for those of you that are here tonight to sign it before you leave. But first off, I want to welcome Mayor George Yucich from Homer Glen. He's going to say a few things, congratulate you. So could you give the mayor a big round of applause just for being with us tonight? And we also have things for our dignitaries tonight that we hope you'll be able to hang in your offices space to remember us by as well. Mayor Yucich.
Well, I came here for the village because we are very proud of you. You're part of, you know, Lockport, Homer, you did a wonderful job. I enjoyed sitting down in front of the TV, having a beer and watching you. Great game. Couple of things that didn't work out at first, but it was impressive. I can't tell you how proud of you we are. Same thing with the parents. Y'all did a good job because you see what happens right now. High school, absolutely wonderful. I got three of my own kids who came through here. I'm a little older than you guys, maybe a lot older. But you brought it back to Lockport, and we all thank you very much. It's very important to have it here. Team spirit's great. Coaches, thank you so much. They apparently listened to everything you said because you kicked butt. So in my eyes, you guys are the champions, and you should be all proud of yourselves. Thanks.
All right. We just have a little something for you, mayor. Just, you know, remember us by and remember this moment. Just like you're part of the municipality, some of you might have participated in some Lockport Park District things. So we've got Bill Reardon from Lockport Park District. He is the executive director. Jody Rigoni, sometimes by day she's in our main office, but she's the vice president for the Lockport Park District Board. Mr. Reardon, you know, Mrs. Rigoni, you know, and other, I think I'm missing one other person. My apologies.
No problem.
If you could introduce Bill, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Again, my name is Bill Reardon. I'm the executive director for the Lockport Township Park District. I also have two park board commissioners. I have Jody Rigoni with me and also Pat Sheehan. So the park district would like to congratulate the 8A State Champions. This was a tremendous accomplishment, and it was really cool to see the community rally behind you guys during that playoff push. So the park district would like to do today is present a certificate to the coaches and to the school. And also at our next board meeting, we will be passing a proclamation. Our board meeting is next Monday, so it'll be a week late, but we'll be passing a proclamation honoring the 8A State Champion. Before I turn it over to Commissioner Pat Sheehan to read that proclamation, I'd also like to congratulate Ellie and also the soccer team on their great accomplishment also. I'll turn it over to Pat to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Bill. Bill helped facilitate this, so I really appreciate that. Dr. McBride, thank you very much. Thank you, school board. Thank you to all the coaches. A lot of them know me from before from the junior porter, so I appreciate all the help you've done on that front. I guess we're setting something else up with A.D. Dwyer, which we're very excited about. But we're here for the park district today. I'm going to read the proclamation honoring the 2021 IHSA 8A State Champion Lockport Township High School Football Team. Whereas the Lockport Township High School Football Team claimed the 2021 IHSA 8A State Championship on Saturday, November 27th, 2021. And whereas the Lockport Township High School Football Team demonstrated athleticism, sportsmanship, and dedication, allowing them to experience the thrill of victory. And whereas through the leadership of head coach George Sartre and the entire coaching staff, standards were set and goals achieved for each player and the team as a whole. And whereas each member of the Lockport Township High School Football Team contributed to the success of the team through determination, dedication, and team unity. And whereas the Lockport Township High School Football Team continues to unite this community and has given the Lockport Township residents great memories to cherish and a renewed pride in our youth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lockport Township Park District Board of Commissioners and staff honor the Lockport Township High School Football Team and congratulate them on their successful 2021 IHSA 8A State Championship title in the outstanding manner in which the team represented its school and community.
All right. Yeah, nicely done. And yeah, big round of applause. And Mr. Sheehan, we also know that you are in charge of the junior porters. So we also have a plaque because we know a lot of you started as youth. And none of these accomplishments happened just on their own. Sure, they happened because of a great coach, great athletes, great parents, but a lot of people invested in you when you were growing up. If you're growing up in Homer Glen, Lockport, Crest Hill, but also coached you as youth. And really tonight, we just want to honor all the different boards that have kind of poured their hearts into you to represent us as well, as well as you did. So thanks so much. Before you depart, we also have some sweatshirts and things like that for you as well over there. Thanks so much, Pat. And be sure to do a little signature right here if you get a moment just so we can commemorate you and everything that you've done. I'm going to turn it back over to Mrs. Lopez Caneva to wrap us up.
All right, at this moment, we're going to take like a 10-minute recess here from our board meeting so that our fellow board members, if they'd like to go down and congratulate the players or coaches individually. And also to Ellie also, but yes, okay, we'll take a little 10-minute break. All right. All right.
Good evening. I hope all you guys are doing well. We have only a couple things to gloss over tonight. The first thing is something that has been brought to me numerous times throughout the past months since we met last, and that is the seating arrangements with the lunchroom. As you're probably aware, we have the vast majority of our students that sit in the cafeteria during their lunch periods, but then there's probably about maybe two hundred kids is my estimation. I don't exactly know what that number is, that are not able to sit in the lunchroom. And they have missed out on a lot of things this year, like the DJ that we have in the lunchroom during homecoming week. That is something that they didn't get to experience this year, and I know that was something a lot of people were looking forward to, and that was an experience they missed out on. Candy grams, the recycling wars that the climate committee hosted, and the subsequent ice cream award. And then some other various things. And that was just something that a lot of people had brought up to me, so I wanted to bring that to all your attention. And a lot of people know about this, and I get mentioned this a lot, so that's why I'm bringing it to your attention. I can, there's a lot of people who know I have a meeting tonight. They were counting on me to bring this to your attention, so that's something that I wanted to make sure you were aware of. And then also regarding central campus, at our last board, at our last student government meeting, I tried to confer with a lot of the freshmen because they're a quarter of our population, and they don't, they don't have a big voice, especially because they don't have any board members. And the one thing that got repeated to me from them was that they have short lunches on Wednesdays, so I just wanted to make sure that their voice was heard. And that's really all I have, so we're going to go on to some of our future events for next semester that we're planning on.
So the next thing we wanted to talk about was just our plans for events for next semester. So we decided that we were all going to take a month. So Charlie is going to do an event in January along with the blood jug that we're also going to do in January. And then Javi and I, we're going to take February, and we were planning on doing a dodgeball tournament. And then Francesca is going to take March, and in March, we're also going to do the St. Waldrich's fundraiser. So we're really looking forward to that, especially because we didn't do much in December. So we're excited that second semester, we're going to be more involved and do more events for the student body, so.
As an overall closing statement, as the semester ends, we just wanted to thank you for all the hard work you guys have done to make it possible to be in person every day. This has been like one of my favorite years since freshman year, when we were, when we were able to be in person. And it's just been nice to experience things like homecoming and just be together as a community. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, you can come up, the next group, Student Equity.
Hello, good evening, everyone. We, the four of us are here representing the Student Equity Action Committee. And tonight, I'd like to start our wrap-up of 2021 with a discussion of the things we've already accomplished this school year. I am Sophia Marcial, a senior member of the SEAC. I have also been on the leadership for two years. And I'd like to start by saying that we have had an insanely successful first semester. The, this semester, we focused mostly on celebrating different cultural identities. And really, our biggest celebration in this first semester was Hispanic Heritage Month, with the centerpiece of that celebration being the door decorating we did around East Campus. So we would like to thank everyone who made that a possibility, a celebration on that scale a possibility. So thank you very much to everyone who helped with that. And we'd like to go into the second semester, also continuing this momentum in celebrating different cultural identities and other perspectives, especially in February and March, as we celebrate Black History Month and Women's History Month. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Osay. I'm a sophomore here at Lockport, and this is my second year at being in SEAC in the leadership group. I'm here to briefly talk about our future plans and relations to the police. In SEAC, we are fighting to bridge the gap between police and students across all ethnic backgrounds, sexual identities, and genders. We are hoping to induce larger conversations in which we will elaborate more on student-minority life, current events, and creating a stronger bond with those who secure our school and city. We are now in the planning phase of our fourth police panel, in which we hope to discuss all of these concerns, hopes, and dreams with them in a safe environment.
Hello, my name is Sophia Eleanardo, and I am a junior here at Lockport Township, and this is my second year in SEAC and in the leadership group. One of our goals is to, as a group, is to embrace conversations and the de-stigmatization of mental health. This includes having discussions about depression and anxiety students may face, as well as promoting the validation of and social acceptance of said ailments, and teaching comparable and realistic coping mechanisms to students to deal with anxiety and depression and academic burnout, especially with the approach of final exams. We hope to accomplish these goals by working closely with the guidance department on a student-feedback-based mental health curriculum. We are a group that is eager to work, we are a group that is eager to work with staff, and we invite any members of the guidance department to our meetings to discuss said topics. In addition, we hope to have a mental health panel in late January, to which we invite any faculty and students to exchange ideas and have a discussion about their personal experience and with mental health and ideas on how we can improve student mental health at LTHS. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Connor Edson-Parker. I'm a sophomore. This is my first year in SEAC Leadership. I'm here to talk to you about the students' feeling towards Compass and having difficult conversations in the classroom. At the beginning of the year, staff and students alike both had negative feeling towards Compass. We felt it was a waste of time, but as the year progressed, we realized that it was an amazing inclusion to the curriculum as it allows those who may not have the opportunity to connect with teachers or work outside, or work on schoolwork outside of school, a chance to do so. Thank you, staff and teachers, for including this positive solution in the LTHS curriculum. Important conversations. Each and every day, our country becomes more polarized, and tension is felt from all sides. Today in age, high school students are discovering ideologies and politics through the internet, which creates an echo chamber where differing opinions are shunned out and not heard. We feel that the students of LTHS are ready to have these hard conversations. The classroom should be a place where students can discuss their opinions, and at the end of the day, both sides feel their opinion was heard. Many times, we feel that in history classes, the class is on the brink of positive conversation, but it gets shut down in fear of it getting out of hand. But in that situation, no one is heard out. We feel these conversations should be had and should be encouraged. Thank you for hearing us out, as we feel the best and most memorable moments in the classroom was when the students learned from each other.
To wrap up, SEAC's ultimate goal is to appreciate and amplify the needs of students across all backgrounds. SEAC is dedicated, is a dedicated group of students working alongside LTHS faculty to increase cultural literacy and foster a deeper appreciation for diversity at our high school. We hope for the future, with your help, to create uncomfortable but needed conversations to bridge the gap between faculty and students. We are working for a day when people hear or see Lockport Porters, that they're reminded of a community that values equity, equality, and inclusion. We would like to thank the Board of Education and Dr. McBride for this amazing invite and allowing us to be here today. Do you have any questions for us? Awesome, we hope that you have a wonderful night, and go Porters!
Thank you, thank you. Again, thank you for sharing your thoughts on that. Okay. Okay, moving on, we have our AFT report, Karen, Ms. Karen Cooper.
I always have to follow up all of that. Good evening, everybody. And basically, just take a moment to thank you. I think it's been a great year, I think, listening to student voices. I mean, for what we've had to work through, I think it's been a great year. You know, on behalf of the membership, I would like to, you know, wish you all enjoyable holidays. And my only sad thing that I have to report is that we made the decision to actually cancel our Christmas party. Just thinking it may not be a good idea to be the super-spreader event for people going out to their families at this point. But we're hoping to do something in the spring when we get a better opportunity for it. But thank you again to everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Student Action, is it Student Equity Action Committee? You're excused if you want to leave. Okay?
You guys are welcome to stay if you want. This is really exciting stuff.
So, to that, you know, don't, stay if you'd like, to see democracy in action. You know, otherwise, you're not going to hurt our feelings if you are headed out.
Okay.
There they go.
Okay, bye-bye, good night.
That's the pass key.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the IASB Governing Board Report.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. What I want to talk about for IASB is the Delegate Assembly. I was asking about that. The key thing that everybody was looking at this year was, again, concealed carry, I think it's called, in the schools. This year, it's got a little bit more steam. It failed, though. It was two oh two to one eighty-one, but that's more votes than it got before. A lot of the people made a compelling argument for it, you know, so we spent at least fifteen, ten, fifteen minutes on it. What was interesting this year at the Delegate Assembly is they decided to go high-tight. They had little voters that you could vote, they had to vote for revolution or whatever was on the table. It was, it's a great idea, and it started out on a rocky foot. They couldn't get it to quite work at first, but finally, they got it to work. And the interesting thing was, once you logged in and was seated to vote, if you left the room for whatever reason, you could not come back to vote. So they started out with four hundred and eleven delegates, and I think they ended up with three hundred or something. So... There wasn't a, that was the only item that was a contention mainly was the one about concealed carry. Any questions? And I kept the votes on, I think, if anybody wanted to vote.
Thank you for sticking it out, Luann.
Thank you, thank you, Lord.
Thank you for sticking it out.
But it's interesting, you know, the comments that people do and put out there. One of the interesting things was, you know how we have the concealed agenda? And you can take an item out of the concealed agenda. Typically, you take that out because you oppose it, maybe you oppose it, it's like take it out, and you want to give a reason why. They took an item out of the concealed agenda, and everybody was for it. It's like, even the person that opposed it, then you make sense, you know? But that should waste the thing. So I think they, they wound up going, it started at ten-thirty, and it didn't end until almost one o'clock. 1:00. So, when we had our lunch, I had just paid for it, so it, it was, you know, a little turbulent, but I think next year, they'll do a better job. But I liked the voting. Yes, no, it was a great improvement. What they used to do was, you know, if you wanted something great, pay a fee.
Yeah.
And then they had to try to count it, two people counted. Some times, there was issues with that, but this seemed to be more accurate than, also, it gave you privacy, nobody knew how you voted. So, that's the, like I said, I got the information, I wrote all the votes down, if anybody wants to check anything. And then the other thing I want to report on today is, I think in February, whatever, then...
The Legislative Breakfast?
The Legislative Breakfast. It's a chance for you to go and meet your legislators, especially the ones that's on the education committee or something. And they'll tell you about who's coming, and that's where you can talk to them about things that you want to do. So, I enjoy, now they are, and go, so it's at the Renaissance Center. So, if you want to go, they're captain, so she's ready to be there.
Yes, and I believe there is a registration form in your folder.
There is?
So, there is. Okay.
Anyway, just make sure that you do that or not.
Thank you.
It's representative, at least one.
Yes.
And it's an in-person meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Next, we have our Foundation Board Report.
Hi. Just real quick, so on, we had 317 people join us for our Santa event last Sunday. It was great to see staff and their families come to be able to share and feel appreciated, hopefully, and get their picture with Santa and their wish lists mentioned to the big man himself. So, we were excited for that. In January, on January 7th, we will present the two Maroon Apple Awards to the staff during their Teacher Institute Day. And then we also have confirmed our 23rd Annual Golf Outing will be on June 22nd of 2022. So, not, not a whole lot on that, other than just the date. And then now has never been a better time than to go ahead and get started with an Alumni Association. Paul Ivenek is one of our board members on the foundation and he is going to be hosting a kind of alumni meet and greet on January 26th at Nick and Ivy's. So, and the next board meeting for the foundation is January 11th at 4 o'clock. That's kind of it for the one week I've been here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Legislative Report.
Well, I, you know, just when I thought I had nothing of consequence to bring to board members, I have two things of consequence to bring to you. The first is my, in your agenda, my description of House Bill 2778 is already outdated as of today. This was a House bill that passed both the House and a very strong majority in the Senate that permitted employees in education who had any type of COVID absence, sick with COVID, quarantined due to close contact with COVID, or doing childcare or spousal care for someone in their family who was sick with COVID or exposed to COVID. It has been on the governor's desk. The governor has 60 days to sign it. We learned today from the organizations that we're in, Scope and High School District Organization, that the governor plans on vetoing it, which will send it back to the House and Senate. I think the governor is doing that because of feedback from schools and overwhelming concern that if staff, as we negotiated with our union last spring, if, if staff have open unlimited administrative days related to COVID absences, that that could already, that could continue to cause staffing issues that, that we currently have right now, when we need subs, when we need to replace people. I think we're in a healthy spot, you know, I always want to knock on wood with that, but I know that many of our districts across the state are not in as healthy spot and some schools have talked in the past few weeks about going full remote, especially downstate because of absences due to staff members. This will send it back to the House and Senate. The Senate, it looks legislatively like it will, you know, vote again and certainly override the veto. Where the, the issue is going to get debated is in the House. And it was a strong bipartisan vote for it in the House. And so, different lobbying organizations in education are reaching out to representatives to ask them to reconsider, to ask them to explain their vote with the logic that this was a very rushed bill and not a lot of consideration of the impact that it could have in terms of staffing. So, stay tuned if that veto will be overridden. And then on Friday, December 10th, superintendents across state were invited to a webinar with Dr. Ngoze Ezeki, the Director of Illinois Department of Public Health. And we did hear something that she is recommending to the governor. Obviously, she's not the governor and as she said a number of times, she doesn't want to one-up her boss, but she shared her recommendation. And this comes from a year's worth of study of schools by Illinois Department of Public Health, working with the CDC. We submitted some data based on this and it was primarily focused on transmission in schools, illness among students. It scoped in on quarantine. And the findings of the state and the recommendation of the governor reflect the recommendations we've had and we've now built a database of way over 4,000 contact tracing incidents. And that is this. In the state, the transmission rate of COVID-19 in schools where there's been universal masking is 2%. Much higher when masks have not been, been present. Also, physical distancing, three feet or more, has been a very successful means of keeping schools open, keeping the spread of COVID-19. Why is that significant for Illinois Department of Public Health? Because right now, we have 3,500 people who are hospitalized in Illinois due to COVID when we have disasters like we had downstate. Those people injured by tornadoes compete for hospital beds with those who are suffering from COVID-19. So, her recommendation is to do everything we can to stop spread and to focus in on masking and physical distancing. Absent from that is her recommendation that we no longer quarantine, which is, which is major. I mean, every person in this room understands, if they're an administrator, how much labor it has taken from locating students, locating staff, locating close contacts, advising those people. We have, right now, today, under quarantine, we have 155 students that are not allowed to come to school. The data that we amassed last year, the data that we have now is those students vaccinated or unvaccinated in a full mask, physically distant environment, do not get COVID. So, acknowledging that, I would say that if the governor accepts this and announces this, it would remove about three quarters of the, the work that we invest in managing COVID-19 mitigations. So, major, we'll see where Governor Prisker takes that recommendation. You know, as Dr. Ezeki said, she's not the governor, it's a recommendation to him and looking forward to hearing more about that. Any, any questions? All right.
Thank you. All right. Communications, I believe there's none. Okay. All right. Freedom of Information requests are there. Comments?
We have none.
Another, none. All right. All right. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. The school district, the school district expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property or at a school event per Board Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30. Any person who engages in conduct prohibited by this policy may be ejected from school property. The person is also subject to being denied admission to school events or meetings for up to one calendar year, and there are none. Next, we have our approval items. Just need a motion for the approval of our regular meeting minutes for November 15, 2021.
So, move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Yes. And we had no closed session meeting minutes. Next, I need approval of a board member expenses for December 2021. I can, all right, it's been motioned. I need, I can second that. All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Lopez-Caneva. Are there any questions to those expenses? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez-Caneva?
Yes. Next, we have the approval of the Treasures Reports for November 2021.
So, move.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to that? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navarro?
I can put this over here for your positive.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez-Caneva?
Uh, yes. All right, Superintendent Update.
All right. We designated after going to the triple I conference, this is a time in my report, really to yield a floor to board members about what you learned in the triple I. I wanted to just share a few important announcements for you and then something that I took away from the triple I, actually a presentation I did and something for the board to think about. Just a few things to make you aware of and make the public aware of COVID update. It has been a challenging and difficult couple of weeks since Thanksgiving. Our uptick in COVID, we're well over 50 student cases, well over a dozen staff cases. We have 155 students presently on quarantine. And the numbers that we have in the community, we haven't seen since November 2020. So, we've seen this very sharp and very intense rise in COVID cases. Again, we're not experiencing transmission person-to-person. We had our first person-to-person transmission last week between what we believe is two staff members in close contact. But those infections are not coming from school, they're coming from contact that individuals have off, off-campus. Just I highlighted before, it takes a tremendous amount of labor with close contacts, quarantining, work that has to go to Will County Public Health to register those, and we're keeping our eye on that. Great day yesterday here and great week, last week in terms of community service. We know that that's important to the board. I was very proud of our Community Service Committee, which is Lori Christopherrow, John Greenan, Carrie Green, Jen Crosby, and Brian Lesnar, and then particularly Grant Ferkelak, our Guidance Department Chair, and Jen Crosby in his department, who just did a fabulous job coordinating with Will County. Hundreds of needy families were on campus yesterday getting food, getting household items, getting clothing, both in the field house and the district parking lot, and hundreds of student volunteers. It was just a great Porter showing of reaching out to the community. College and career partnerships, they just seem to be rolling. I have outreach from Sitco, from Lewis University, United Way of Will County. Our colleagues down the street here at Panduit are very interested in internships for Lockport Township High School students, so stay tuned. Emergency day preparation, well, you could kind of think of us as the Grinch because snow days are, I think of a past, in, in many ways, we've submitted, the board has approved e-learning days for, in place of emergency closure days. We have worked with our staff, we're going to have a schedule that would involve our Wednesday schedule and a slight late arrival to get everybody adjusted in the morning and then into online synchronous and asynchronous work with students the, the rest of the day with their, their teachers. That might not feel great that you don't have a snow day traditionally, but you won't have an additional day at the, at the end of the school year. Mayor Steve Straight came on over on Friday. We had a great visit. We talked about student mental health, we talked about Compass, we, we talked about safety in general. This was a follow-up to a, a launch that Mayor Straight had with Ann Lopez-Caneva and we were joined by his wife, Wendy Straight, and Jeanette Castillo, our new Director of Public Relations, joined us as well. Really good dialogue. Board members can look forward to some things that the mayor and I are going to partner to have some town halls and discussions about education. Safety and security, we are, today is the one-year anniversary of a very significant alleged Russian hack, I guess I should say that, of US cyber systems, and we are redoubling our efforts to keep Porter information safe. Mr. Dusterhoff just initiated with many of the administrators here, two-factor authentication. So, we're doing everything we can. And, and then finally, congratulations to our Special Education Department. We've got to get board members here. L-Town Grounds is a hit and a coffee addiction for this superintendent. You can mobile order, you can, the mayor and his wife thought that their latte was Starbucks-worthy. We don't even talk about Starbucks anymore. It's kind of a neat partnership. We got to get you in to have a cup and it's neat that our coffee roaster, for example, is right here from Lockport. It's a pretty neat thing. The one thing, I want to just step back and, and just contribute from my end, I attended sessions at triple I and Open Meetings Act, Effective Financial Transparency, Supporting Women in Leadership, which was outstanding, Defining Implicit Bias. I shared with you a presentation that I made on work that Jen Webb Ray was involved in, our principals were involved in, Matt Dusterhoff, Lori Christopherrow, and our partners at Forecast Five Analytics. Board members are aware that the state of Illinois is looking at college and career readiness as a stronger metric for school recognition, status, and performance designation than really any other factor. Probably right next to it, graduation rate, freshmen on track. And what I would submit is we spent a year trying to create a dashboard that you'll see more and more in the new year of how college and career-ready are our students? And I would submit, as I did in the presentation, that that really is our equity plan. Being relentless, there's a, a graphic there, a dashboard that we'll start showing to board members that really indicates how close are all of our students to a very rigorous college benchmark that we've set, which is every student graduating with an advanced placement or a dual-credit course? How career-ready are our students? Having a career internship, a career exposure, exposure, or an industry credential? And really, the mission of our district, I would submit, is to get as many students to that college and career readiness place as possible. We've got a long way to go. Our bar is actually higher than the state's bar. I know that makes Mrs. Johnson very happy. We've set a, a tougher metric for ourselves than even the state has set, but we want to identify who might not be making that bar. We want to move all of our learners, regardless of their gender, their income status, their special needs, closer when they graduate so that when they graduate, return to Lockport, go off to college, invest time, go into the military's time well-invested and they have success. So, many of them come back and they'll be your neighbors. I shared that to a, a pretty large audience and it was really, really proud to present that. But I'd open it up now, the rest of my report, to, to you and things you learned at triple I.
Definitely, yes. You know, yes, I, I think that this was very well-attended. I mean, there were a lot of people there and I can start, you know, with myself, but yeah, I did attend and I left my written report here also, just in case if you, more because it was going to be a lengthy type. But I attended the social-emotional learning, it was like more important than ever now. But just a little summary on that, it's that positive relations in schools are central to the well-being of, of both students and teachers. Emotions and relationships exist every day and each day in the classroom, staff room, and throughout the school, and we have to promote those positive feelings, enjoyment, achievement, optimism, safety, and sense of belonging. This will create a...
This will create environment where able, where everyone is able to flourish and learn. Like I said, it's just, right now, she did, the presenter, Jen Perry, she did say, you know, right now, teachers should connect with their students on a constant basis. Students lost their connection these last two years due to the pandemic. There's also the social peer pressure. The more invested students are, the more they are connected, okay? I went to the General Assembly, I'm sure all of you were there with Joe Dombrowski. He was a very comical person. I did U2 him also, but he's been invited twice to the, to be on the Ellen Degeneres Show. But throughout his remarks, he was telling teachers to be creative in their teaching, that curriculum is, is just the bones, it's up to the teachers to put the meat on the bones and do not teach by the script. Like I said, he was very engaging, he was very comical, but, but well, well, well-attended. I did also attend Every Voice Matters, engaging those we serve. And, and you know what, just in, it was, that was the presenter's, it was superintendent and the board president from Batavia School District, one oh one. But after hearing them, how, you know, they have to reach out and hear from all the stakeholders and people want to be heard, you know, you have to direct them to the right person. And I felt like, you know what, after leaving that, I feel that LTHS, we're doing a great job with our website, our social media splash page and robocalls. I think we, we do a lot than they do as far as communication. So I'm very, kudos to all on that, okay? Let's see, also, you can't make this stuff up, the legal review. That was also two attorneys that were very comical too, but they did, I think Lori Christophero was there with me, and, you know, they discussed the highs and lows of the year and offered advice and insight on how to respond to the district. And it's amazing how there is going to be a new lens being focused on curriculum and instruction. Let's see, there is, they did leave a handout, you know, which I did, I attached it to you guys so that you can read it because it's very, very interesting on that, you know, for that. And then on Sunday, I did attend the board's president networking, and that was like a roundtable discussion of board presidents. And most of the discussions were, were focused around the pandemic. And, and after listening to them, I even wrote it here on my report, I'm grateful to our superintendent, Dr. McBride, to his entire staff, I mean, how tirelessly he worked on the remote learning, keeping our building safe and constant communication to our board and to the community, to students. It was just, just hearing the other board presidents from, you know, from these school districts, most of them were from rural air schools, the nightmares that they had to encounter, you know, board members resigning. I mean, it was just, I'm thinking, oh, my gosh, we were just so lucky, you know, to be that. And, but yes, so I'm sure a lot of them, I did, I don't have a business card, but they were all giving me business card. They were all asking me, like, how did you do this? And it's like, we need business cards for sure. You do, we do. We do, because they were asking me for some. And, but yeah, they, they will, I'm sure, reach out to either, to either to you, Bob, or to me, you know, but just to get, you know, more on how we're handling certain situations. But thank you. That was it, really. That's, all right. Luann, do you want to go down, and then we'll follow down?
Okay. My, I think my report will be, and then you, uh, really.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's my one, uh, question. Um, that Dr. McBride moved earlier, diversity, equity, inclusion, that's one of my other books that I'm always talking about. So my one class was equity and educational imperative. Oh, sorry. Okay, because I'm moving. Can you hear me now? Equity and educational imperative. And it went through the years of things that happened, and I'm going to give you an overview of it. A lot of this I lived through, so I can identify with it, okay? It says, in nineteen sixty-six, James Coleman did research with sixty thousand teachers, six hundred thousand students, and coined the phrase, the achievement gap. So that's when it came out, in nineteen sixty-six, okay? Which he had concrete evidence that African-American children were testing seventh grade levels behind their white counterparts. What amazed me is, since nineteen sixty-six, we still have the achievement gap. You know, you know, we haven't really moved the needle, as the saying goes. And then it says, in eighteen ninety-six, the Supreme Court ruled separate but equal was not against the Fourteenth Amendment. That included schools, public transportation, facilities, restaurants, et cetera. In nineteen twenty-seven, they ruled that the Chinese, people with Chinese ancestry also, that separate but equal applied to them. And then in nineteen thirty, Mexican-American people, okay? In nineteen fifty-four, Brown versus Board of Education ruled that separate but equal was not in fact equal. Which we know. In nineteen fifty-seven, the segregation of schools with the little ragnay. And two thousand and two, President George W. Bush implemented No Child Left Behind. Some thirty-six years later to try and address the achievement gap of poor and minority students. In twenty fifteen, President Obama implemented ESSA, Every Student Succeeds. You know, we still trying to address that achievement gap, we haven't hit the nail on the head. In twenty nineteen, the National School Board Association Equity Matters Advocate Agenda states, we, we are at a moment in history where we have an opportunity to make unprecedented progress, to bring about educational equity, and we must. So I was going to give you some other stuff, but I won't get on my soapbox. But as I said, a lot of this I lived through, you know, because I grew up in South. So I grew up with, you know, I went to an all-black school. My friends who grew up in the North said that they, they did have mixed schools, you know. I never had a white teacher until I was in the tenth grade. All my teachers were African-American. And everything was separate. We never had new books, we got handoffs. Every book I ever received had somebody's name in it. Because we got the, when, when the white schools got new books, the black kids got the old books. So things were not equal. You know, even though we've been trying to address this, you know, we haven't got it. Got to be, there's got to be a solution, you know. And Dr. McBride had showed you the picture when we had a retreat, of, you know, how they show you, you know, the equity action about, you know, being equal. What do you do to make it equal, you know? You got to, you know, they had the picture where they had the kid trying to look over the fence, remember that? They talked about that too. You know, how do you make it equal? Do you just give them extra pallets to stand on? Or do you actually, and the solution that they showed was to actually take the fence down? You know, you give every child what they need, and I'm a proponent of that, you know. Look at the child, you know, no two kids are alike. I got two kids. My son and my daughter both learn differently. You know, there's two different learning styles there. My other class was Bridging What Divides Us, which is interesting. It brought me back to some stuff I started on. It talked about listening, attending, and reflecting. And listening is to say a set of skills for showing that you understand the thoughts and feelings being communicated from the speaker's frame of reference. A lot of times, we say we're listening, but we're not listening. When someone's talking to you and you're trying to think of the next thing ahead, and you're not concentrating, you're not really listening, okay? You're hearing, but you're not listening. Attending, minimize distractions, turn towards the person, making eye contact, nodding your head, congruent facial reactions, and, you know, recognize the person, that you are actually there in the conversation, you know. I always call it, be here now. You know, be in the conversation now, you know. And they stress that you tell the people, when you're talking to them, say, tell me more. You know, when someone tells you something, tell me more. You need to try to understand what it is they're telling you, you know. Reflecting, briefly state your own words. You fill blank because, decor what, of, what you're most excited about is. Try to get to a true understanding of what the person is trying to tell you. You know, we, as school board members, you know, we hear our constituents, we hear the students, you know. You hear what I'm saying, hear. We need to listen to them and try to be there, as they say, be here now. And then try to acknowledge the fact that we did hear what they're telling us. We might not always can address it, but at least we can say we heard you. So that's my two classes.
Thank you, thank you, Luann. Thank you for all the information. Yes, all right, and for sharing. All right, Michael?
Okay, I did attend the Bridging What Divides Us program. I think Luann was there as well with me. It was very informative, however, it left more questions than answers, basically. Just like, like Luann said, you keep asking questions until you can find a solution that would be helpful to you. And you pretty much summed it up the way that I was going to describe it, so there's no sense in rehashing that. Also, I did attend the general session with the speaker that was very funny.
I went there too.
He was, he was, yeah, he was.
He was good.
Yeah. Put it in a way that was easily understandable and every, well, I could say, I, I could relate to. I, I would think most people could relate to. So in a very practical way, had some good stories and showed that practical teaching is not necessarily practical, but it, it takes a little bit more than just doing it by the book. It takes a little bit of heart, a little bit of understanding of each of your students, and I think he relayed that to the rest of the board.
Yes.
I also want to add, I went to two of the general sessions. The third one I didn't make, but somebody told me it was good, the one in the middle. So I'm gonna do a, do TED Talk, I think he's on TED Talk to find it.
Okay. Thank you. Is that all, Michael? Was that?
I was complete, I was done.
Oh, okay. Dick, Ives, Mr. Ives. It's Mr. Ives.
No, it's, it was, it was nice to get back, because we missed it for a year. We didn't, weren't able to have the conference in twenty twenty. I also presented the board members my summary on what I, what I learned and what I found informative to pass on. If anybody has any questions, what's there, by all means, ask me. I'm not going to, you know, read through that verbatim right now, I just want to have a couple of highlights there. I found the attendance less than the past year, but that's not surprising with our current climate. They still do a very good job of giving very informative, well-structured presentations, whether it's pre-workshops, general sessions, or the other workshops that I attended. So they do a very good job of that. I'd still like to see them do more networking with us, you know, because I found in the pre-workshop, I sat at a table of six ladies and gentlemen, and we had more, we had some very good dialogue after the meeting. And they asked me, I gave them my office business card, because I don't have one.
Yeah.
I don't have one, but they, and I've already heard from them. And some of them were very tiny schools, you know, they.
Oh, yeah.
Our lunch period is their graduating class. It's really small. I did visit the exhibit hall, I, I did see again that trend is really, it's more of a sales hall. I didn't find it as beneficial. But I did run into a couple of our vendors, Bill's here, yeah, and they're very complimentary of LTHS, and they mentioned Bill in, in person, what a great job you do when you're dealing with the architects and the other people that, that I got to meet, they saw this, so they were very complimentary. As far as the sessions I went to, the pre-workshop was the, the more nuts and bolts of what, what I was there in that setting district goals and direction. The good news during the presentation, there was no red flags, like, oh, we should do that, or why don't we do that? I, I think, you know, Dr. McBride and the administration do a great job, and we work as a collaboration together. Some, you know, some school boards don't, and, you know, and so I think that's a big advantage we have. I did attach to my memo the basics of board governance, which is pretty interesting, and those are really the topics that were hit upon, so I won't talk about them now. You know, some, you know, key things in guidance, you know, they brought up some of the board governance and guidance for us to go through, you know, certain things to remember. We have one employee, very lucky to have the gentleman sitting to my left, is that is the board employee, the superintendent. You know, but, you know, the delegation of authority from the board to the superintendent. And, you know, two, two words they brought up a lot, is board members, we govern, and Dr. McBride manages. And he manages with his administration. And then, you know, through a lot of reporting, goal-setting, we do a very good job, it's what, five years out? You know, the, the goals that you provide for us, that, you know, these are all the essentials of governing the school and the district. You know, we have, you know, as board members, we have to, and it was emphasized, especially in these challenging times, the board, we've got to take responsibility for the board. We all have our own opportunity to put our own opinions out there and express our opinions, but whatever is abided by the majority of the board, that is the message that we have to carry forward. The, you know, there, there was some talk about engaging the people and engaging the public. There was hesitation there, and I think some of, a lot of people in the room have dealt with some challenging opportunities. So a lot of the emphasis was, when things settle down, maybe it's time to reengage with, you know, not just who come to the meetings, but out there to our community, and I think it's a good idea. You know, we're not looking for consensus, we're looking for a synergy of everything together. You know, it talks about our various desired route, what, key elements to get our desired results, and it's everything Dr. McBride, you know, and the board talks about, values, mission, vision, and goals. And as far as organization of a school district and a school board, I think we're, I'll give us an exceptional on that. I mean, because a lot of questions that came up, and I was a little surprised, I'm like, oh, okay, they don't do that. The next session I went to and was Coming to Order, I think Kathy was in that one with me. That was, Kathy went with me. If you remember right before our board retreat, we had the pleasure of reading the Coming to Order book, or you had a chapter to read anyway, that was the emphasis of the discussion that we talked about. There's a couple of things I think we should have as a discussion that I think we can clean up our agenda and make it a little more efficient, because we tend to be a little repetitive and introductory what we do within our agenda that we don't need to do. Like when we have to say what we're going to close session for, we don't have to read all, every, every possibility of going into closed session. So, but it's definitely something we can do and make things a little more efficient for people that come. The financial transparency and the information, you know, how, how things are communicated, providing historical context, financial publications, the timing of it, first reading, second reading. And staff, you do a great job, you do exactly what, what they all talk about. I didn't sit there and go, oh, that's something we don't do. Good for you. The, you know, one, one of the ones I, I did, Dr. McBride and I, was the Open Meetings Act one. I, I was a little surprised by, you know, the, the presentation would give facts, but whenever it went off, off-topic and someone brought up a question, we kind of got a non-committal response from the presenter. She said, you know, she said, well, I don't know, or kind of wouldn't answer the question, so. Unfortunately, some people started leaving because of that. They felt that she had her speech and she didn't go off the record for that, but, yeah, there was a little uproar.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was the attorney general, it was the assistant attorney general, so.
She, I just.
She was not coming on certain questions, didn't want to speak for the attorney general and talked more about how her office might interpret a particular situation. So didn't want to really do legal advice from the attorney general right, right on the stage.
That's it.
That's it, well, thank you. All right, Veronica?
So I know everybody's going to be jealous, I spent all of my time with lawyers while I was there. So the first one, actually Zion and I spent an entire day together at the PARA session, and we talked a lot about student discipline and where the school comes in and where they have the ability to discipline versus not. And then, you know, I'll let you touch on that, because I know you were there all day with me. The other one that I attended was also a student residency and how to combat student residency fraud. They had a lawyer and then two superintendents, one where students were actually fleeing the district, and then another one where students were trying to come into the district. So it was just interesting. So, it was just interesting, because they talked about the consequences of non-resident children attending a district, and then just how, you know, that cost per student, the resources that you're giving up, the increased class sizes, and students with disabilities who ultimately can cost a lot of money, depending on what their disability is. And then, as far as students attending schools outside their home district, just the loss of the population, the loss of diversity within a district, reductions in funding, and then ultimately what could possibly happen, which would be a school closure. So I'll just be brief with that, and then the last one I attended was the You Can't Make This Stuff Up, which, with those two lawyers, they were fantastic, I enjoyed listening to them. And they just talked about a lot of the things the school districts are dealing with today, and just how to combat them. And then I just saw, I found their predictions pretty interesting as well. So, yeah, so Zion, if you want to add to what we went and saw?
Okay, so what I learned in the conference. I think one of the, I think this was more of an experience for me. I think a lot of the things that I took away from the conference are more of like personal growth stuff and like learning more about myself. Because we did attend that PARA, that PARA, what was it, PARA and something slash? We got our certification for that. And I learned a lot about like how the school is organized. Like I didn't realize that like deans and like principals and stuff like that. It really did make more of like appreciation for like our administrative staff. Although I don't quite know a hundred percent, there are still some questions I do have. I'm still trying to like absorb, just like noticing what other people are, what everyone is doing. I also noticed that it is really hard, how do I say this? I also noticed that I tend to not really know how to talk to other people who are on the school board. Because when I like sat down and I was talking to these people for the first time, it was really hard to like strike up small talk at first. So, just listening in on like how people talked about like speaking to one another, I realized like, oh yeah, I could talk about that, I could talk about like how they experience at the school board. Because if you saw me when I first sat down with these people, I was like, yeah, so what do you do on your school board? I was like, that's, that, that's a really weird question to ask if they're just a member. So, a majority of it too is like learning how to deal with like a conference. Because I thought like conferences were easy. I thought it was just like wake up, show up, do stuff. And I think like on, on the Saturday that I was there, I was like, oh, I forgot to schedule time to eat. I am hungry, and I just realized I have, I don't know what I'm doing. It's like one of those things where if anybody ever felt like, like I thought I was prepared for it, but then it wasn't until like I actually attended the conference, I was like, yeah, no, there's a lot of stuff that I didn't like prepare for. I didn't like, I should have prepared for it, but I didn't realize that it was like, yeah, I should have probably like figured out what I should be, how to like talk to people who are superintendents, talk to other school board members, like figure out how to have dialogue with them. Because it's not, it's, it's those things that you don't really talk about, or you don't really think about until you're in that situation, that it's like, yeah, what am I supposed to do at this point? Even like listening in on some of the lectures, like I, I knew what the lecture was going to be talking about, but because this is all like new information for me, I felt the feeling of like information overload, where they were just, they just kept like giving me new information. And while I'm still trying to like process one information, I'm still thinking about the previous information, stuff like that. So it, it definitely feels like, like, yeah, if I ever, next time I go to this, I can be more prepared than I was, even though I thought I was like really prepared for it. But yeah, it really is just like a learning experience for like a first-time convention. I thought it was really nice.
Well, thank you, thank you Zion, being a first year, it is, it can be overwhelming. But thanks for attending, and you'll be better next year. All right, okay, well, thank you. Okay, next, we go into our consent agenda items. I just need a motion for our consent agenda items, number two to number five.
So move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Ives and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those consent agenda items? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Johnson? Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw, can you hear me? Shaw, yes?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Next, we have our action consideration items. I just need an approval for the resolution levy and taxes for the tax year 2021.
So move.
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but a comment. The, the video that you put out on social media, did that explain the levy? I made my husband watch it. And it was very eye-opening for him. So, Stephanie, thank you very much for submitting to that.
Oh, okay.
Rock star.
That's right, as he always does, right, for all of us. Okay, all right, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson? Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, next, we need the approval of Alaport Township High School District Two O Vice's participation in the, in the teacher's retirement system supplemental savings plan. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Lopez Caneva and second by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions to that? Hearing none, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson? Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, next, it's, there's no policies? Okay, that's fine. All right, public comments, all right. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call up speakers by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. The school district expects mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct among all people on school property or at a school event per Board Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30. Any person who engages in conduct prohibited by this policy may be ejected from school property. The person is also subject to being denied admission to school events or meetings for up to one calendar year. And there is none. All right, we have now our information report, principals' report.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to say thank you for honoring all of our students. And, you know, every month, we bring students in here, and it's such a great tribute to all the phenomenal things that are going on within our district and our teaching staff, our coaches. You know, all of their hard work and effort has paid off through a rough, you know, the last two years. So our athletics, again, congratulations to our A-Day State champs. We had three students who were all-state. And tonight just shows you the community support that, that has been shown to them, has been tremendous. But our winter sports are underway, so we're very excited to kick off another season. Our boys' basketball team's currently seven and one. They won the WJOL tournament and are getting excited to head down to Pontiac. Very excited about the numbers that turned out for girls' basketball this year. They had a little bit of a struggle in the beginning, but have had a couple of great wins as of recent. And we're taking on Lincoln Way Central tonight, so looking forward to hearing what took place. Our boys' bowling team finished top three in their first two tournaments. Girls' bowling, even though their numbers are slightly down this year, they just won at both levels, the Palantir Tournament. Our cheerleading, when we entered this, we just said they had a competition. Happy to announce they took first place for the varsity team this past weekend. And then also, our dance program scored a program high two weekends ago at the Naperville Competition. And then wrestling, we have a great lineup this winter. Several of our state champs from the football team will be looking to possibly find a state championship, hopefully in our wrestling program. So they have a couple of huge meets coming up over the holiday break. And then our boys' swim and dive, we did have to take a pause there, but we're looking forward to a great season with the defending conference champions. And then our activities, we've had a great couple of weeks with our activities. Madrigal's had four sell-out crowds. The seventh and ninth, they did, our band had amazing performances here. And on the sixteenth this week, the Holiday Choir Concert will be taking place here at East Campus at 7:00 PM. So if you are looking for a wonderful evening, please come on out. And then this Saturday, we are pleased to announce that our band is going to be honored and performing at the Midwest Clinic again this year. And that's an international conference, so this is really a prestigious opportunity, and we are so proud of Mr. Covey and our band program.
Good evening again. To summarize our discipline and attendance portion of the report, as you could see, the attendance last month is a strong ninety-five percent. For discipline, the month of November, the incidents were a decrease from the previous month of October. It's important for us to recognize the work of our deans and our guidance counselors, as well as the administrators, our assistant principals who oversee those offices, Jen Webberay, Matt Bartley, and Trish Sermon. There are a number of situations with individual students and group of students where deans and counselors do tremendous work to help with the overall climate and culture of the building. So we want to thank them as they continue to collaborate, work together, as well as respectively in their individual offices. Mr. Bartley also touched on, in summarizing his report a little bit about character education, and I just wanted to take a minute to talk about that. I think it's important for us as character education, climate and culture of the building are two very important parts of the makeup of both campuses that Carrie and I take very seriously. And we really wanted to thank you for your support. When we talk about character education and the six pillars, respect, responsibility, caring, citizenship, fairness, trustworthiness, it's great to say those things, it's great to have our respective slogans at each campus, it's great to have paintings on the wall, but you have to put those things into action. And it's nice to have opportunities where we bring in someone like Phil Boyt from Learning for Living, who we thank you for allowing us to have Phil the last several years, not only working with our staff, but our students. As Carrie last, last month mentioned, the workshop that we had on November eleventh with our students with Phil Boyt. We also want to thank our students. We need to provide avenues and opportunities for our students to really exemplify those character ed traits that we talk about. And allowing our students to join the student leadership groups at each respective campus has been a joy, I know, for Carrie and I to work with these students, as well as our assistant principals. Last month, it was great to see the initiatives here at East Campus, where we had the turkey grams and the gratitude tree. Carrie at Central Campus is working with her student leadership group as they do legacy icons each week, where the students recognize each other. Next semester, they're planning an act of kindness activity. And as usual, they have their, their monthly character ed rallies as well. This week, we have some students from our student leadership group who have volunteered, they're going to be passing out candy canes and notes of kindness to students after school on Friday in preparation for semester assessments next week, as well as the holiday season. So I just wanted to take a minute to thank you again for your support and the initiatives that we try to lead here with our students at each respective campus. And lastly, on behalf of Carrie and myself, we want to wish the Board of Education a very happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just an informational thing, right?
There is one informational, one informational item, just for the board, as is our practice, whenever we have overnight field trips. And these are not overnight field trips, but when Ski Club does go, they are practically overnight, because they have to go a distance to Michigan, to Wisconsin, drive back. So, you know, cozy overnight on a bus practically, but they get in late, late at night. So just want to make sure when porters are on the road, that board members are aware.
All right, District Goals Dashboard.
All right, I probably could take these, these last three items together. District Goals Dashboard, the board knows that we come generally quarterly. We're a little bit late, in October, we did a very large academic performance presentation. So I wanted to update you, this is both for the public and it's for the board. What are we working on? We have goals in, that we've set as a district. We've got curriculum and support service goals, that's really what I mentioned earlier, getting students to college and career readiness, financial goals, maintaining six to twelve months of cash on hand for the district, climate and culture goals, that our principals carry out, human resources goals, in terms of who do we want to hire? And who do we want to be, and how do we want to welcome newcomers into our district? Technology goals, to maintain the spine and the backbone of the district, and communication goals. Something like the tax levy video, to try to take the skills of someone like Stephanie Kroy and how well she does with our budget and our levy, and make that just easy for folks to understand. So, this dashboard is here, so that you know what we've been doing, and the public can access the dashboard as well. Any questions that we can answer about the work that we're, we're invested in, in reaching those board goals?
I have a question.
I'm sorry. Well, I might have to give you some technical assistance. Did you click on the attachment, Mrs. Johnson? I do not know what is happening, so I will have to check your Chromebook when the, the meeting is over. I'll take a look. All right. Maybe should I just jump into the last two agenda items? Capital expenditures and inter-fund transfers, those are the transfers that we do need to let the board know that we are making between funds for work on Central, work on the port, the, the technology offices, and the work that we're doing to prepare for some work at East Campus roofing repairs. So that's for the board and for the public, if there's any questions about those transfers of money. And finally, always a very clear and very ample, our maintenance report. Construction in the port is taking a little bit longer than we thought. If you go to the tech center, the tech offices, the port itself, and Eltown Grounds, you'd say this looks great. But there are some small details, like some of the, the door fixtures, some of the other things that we've, we've ordered that still need to be completed, and we're getting there. You know, everybody's heard of supply chain shortage, and we're there. But Eltown Grounds is up and running, and that makes me happy every, every, every single morning. Something else to make the board aware of, I've had individual conversations that led to asking Eric Slager, with the district office, what would the district office look like if we gave it just an outside aesthetic facelift? Once we started talking about that, we realized that nothing has been renovated or changed at the district office since nineteen ninety-nine. And that area incorporates our ticket booths, bathrooms, concession stands, locker rooms. As we started looking around, and once you start looking, more and more seems to need work, once you really start to notice it. So, working with Mr. Thompson, we said, well, let's do this right. Let's have our architects look at the district office. When people come to Porter Stadium, it is very prominent, and it gets quite a bit of use in all of our events that we, we hold there. And so we're going to work with DLA to really sit down and say, what are some of the things that we should be doing to upgrade these facilities? And present that to the board, to see if there's an investment you want to make in all of those, those spaces that are housed there, it's sort of the front door to Porter Stadium for us. The roof, there is quite a bit of detail in here with the roof, but to summarize, right now, DLA is taking a look at the sections of the roof that need improvement the most. The roofing project here at East will likely be a multi-year project, it's a huge roof. So obviously, we're strategizing to deal with the sections of the roof that need the most amount of work immediately, all the way to those that need work, if we could scaffold. The entire roof needs to be replaced, but some of it is more significant than we initially thought, and we want to get at that work immediately, because as everyone knows, water damage, frost damage can lead to even more cost and more stress on the building. And then finally, over Thanksgiving break, we had a celebrity visit East Campus here in the form of a giant boom crane. Immediately on Wednesday, when that crane showed. Uh, immediately on Wednesday, when that crane showed up, uh, lots of questions on some of the Facebook, community boards, and emails, and what is happening. Uh, but you might recall, that was the project to put a new chiller in and a new cooling tower. Uh, kudos to Mr. Thompson for all the work that he did with ComEd, and for the grant work to really lower the cost of that installation. Um, it was an amazing, amazing feat of engineering, just to, just to see it happen. That is the maintenance report. And I could probably just close with a few last, uh, announcements. Uh, this Thursday is the holiday concert. Saturday, as Dr. Green mentioned, is really an honor to be at one of the most prestigious global music clinics at eight-thirty A.M. Uh, next, uh, Monday through Wednesday, we have our final assessments for the semester. There will be a winter break, it will start, uh, on the twenty-third. Happy holidays to all of the board members. Uh, we will return on Friday, January seventh, as a staff, and our students will come back on Monday, January twenty, tenth, twenty twenty-two, amazing.
All right, okay, yeah, I also wanted to, what Dr. McBride has said, yes, happy holidays to all of you, and thank you for all your hard work. Um, and yes, on behalf of the board, we got, Dr. McBride, we got your little small gift, and we got also Kathy a little small gift also here, so, but-
Very nice.
But we also noticed that you brought us also gifts, so, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we gotta get a little, little gift for you as well.
Oh, thank you, thank you, and wishing you all a Merry Christmas.
Yeah, thanks for the gifts.
Of course.
All right.
My pleasure.
All right, then, do I have a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Dr. Shaw. All in favor?
Yes.
All right, regular meeting adjourned at eight forty-six.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, Michael.